All right, we'll start the meeting. We already have an executive for personnel. Does anyone have any other needs for executive?
Recording in progress.
No, okay. And I need to amend the agenda to add RL Valley to our liquor control board. So can I please have a motion to-
Motion to accept agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anything on meeting minutes of the 5th or 13th? No corrections? Town manager's report.
So I've signed up for a cybersecurity class being held at the Hub Works in Rutland on February 24th. It was no cost to us. V L C T, FEMA, and Norwich University are putting it on.
Oh, cool.
And it's based on another university's cybersecurity stuff. I've attended a Zoom meeting with the state of Vermont, Green Mountain Power, and Pittsburgh Village Farm regarding the EV charging stations grant. I think we were awarded it back in 2023. We've arranged a site visit with the electrician and Green Mountain Power and Pittsburgh Village Farm to go over, to make sure that Green Mountain Power can do the right transformers and stuff-
Okay.
-for the charging stations and everything. So that will be coming up at the beginning of March. Silaway came in and did a conversion for the town emails. And we're still working out some of the little bugs and hiccups. I've reached out to Devin Neary at the Regional Planning Commission to continue the discussions on the neighborhood districting that Dave had started. I'm going to meet with Devin on the 27th when he's back from vacation to go over that-
Okay.
-and find out what's going on with him and the Planning Commission and get up to date. And Liz and I are working to follow up the conversation about the V HIP. I had a couple of people who watched the meeting who were interested in that. We're still working on trying to get the information and who to contact. So we are working on that. I attended the Board of Civil Authority meeting on February 12th. I'm going to work on getting the code of ethics and ethics training requirements to both the Z B A and Planning Commission. Next week when they meet, I'll be giving them the mandatory links and give them the information.
Okay.
We are down to seven delinquent tax accounts right now. I have two that say they're going to come in and see me. I know the weather's played a part-
Yeah.
...in not being able to get here. So with your guys is okay. I'm going to just continue with the next sale, steps of the sale.
These seven are on the tax sale?
They would be on the tax sale list.
How much is outstanding from those seven, do you know?
Between those seven, I don't know off the top of my head. I know roughly total how much is outstanding for all delinquents, but we can only do- 23, 24, and before.
Right, yeah.
And that has been dropping significantly lately. I had a lot of them come in and do repayment plans, and then I had some come and outright pay off their balances. So the letters have been working. I started with, I think, 17 or 19, so.
Yeah, okay.
Rec Summer Camp is live on my rec for seven weeks, and it is filling up fast. So it's good to see. And baseball and softball registrations will be, start on my rec next week was one. We mentioned both of them. An ad has been released for the Assistant Town Clerk position. It's on our website and in the Brandon Reporter-
Okay.
-starting this week. We're running it for two weeks. And if anybody wants any further information, they can look right on our website and the extended job descriptions there. A GEICO claim has been filed for the January accident that we had. So that's finally complete.
That was the one with the-
Plow truck.
With the plow, with the plow.
Get the plow over on Sagamon?
The plowing, yeah, on Long Trail and Sagamon Road.
Yeah.
Yep.
We did a lot of that work, right, ourselves?
We did.
Yeah.
But it's taken a while to find who the insurance carrier was, get ahold of the insurance carrier, and I just submitted to them all of the pictures today.
We're itemizing the time and all that with our people, right?
So that is in the works, and I'm working my way through all of the cops' quarterly reports that hadn't been submitted yet. So I'm getting there-
All right.
-on those.
So what-
The cops grant. Is there quarterly reports that-
Yep.
For the cops grant, yep.
What's, what are the glitches still with the new system? Like, is it, is that, is it just emails, or?
No.
Pat was having trouble.
It was supposed to be just emails. Some people got walked out of their emails, so we had to get ahold of Silaway again and reset things.
Okay.
And some people think that folders have moved or changed, and it's been a lot of-
Okay.
-a lot of handholding and showing people-
Is this formatting is different?
-where things are, and the format's a little different. All of our Outlooks were upgraded to Microsoft 365, and most of us were on Outlooks like 2016, so.
It's a huge difference.
It's a learning curve.
Yeah, okay.
It's hard to switch when you're there now.
Yeah.
Give me a couple days.
It needs a couple more nights.
Oh, yeah.
It's been a couple days, and Silaway wants to sit down with me and have a meeting on the next step, so we're definitely holding off until after town meeting and after a couple of other things have calmed down-
Yeah.
-before we start the next step, because otherwise I'm going to be gray by the next meeting.
They're bald.
One or the other. Geez. Let's hope for gray. Anybody have any questions for Ann? Okay, thank you. Select Board member remarks. I just wanted to give a shout out to our highway crew, because now that I drive-
You appreciate it, huh?
-a lot, I really, you know, I mean, I know our roads are great, but it's just really, especially with all the snow we've gotten, puts, you know, it's very obvious lately how much better Pittsburgh's roads are than other towns.
Oh, yeah.
So just nice to recognize that those guys do a great job. Any public comments? Okay, all right.
We go on.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm not fully on the agenda.
Yeah. You are on the agenda, so if that's, yeah. All right, so let's, old business. Potential opening of the Class 2, 3, and 4 roads to ATVs.
I made the changes you guys were looking for, but I also put on there that Class 1 roads could only be crossed at a 90-degree angle, because that's what our old ATV ordinance was.
Yep.
And then that way, it includes what is available for Class 1, so it doesn't cause any confusion.
Okay.
So what, our next step on this is have a public hearing, right?
You can approve it, and then-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Prove it. The only way you'd have to have a public hearing is if somebody put an appeal in against it.
Has Gary seen it? Wouldn't we usually run it by him, just to make sure?
I thought Dave, I thought Dave had Gary.
But even with the, with the changes, I mean, this is a different version, so I didn't know.
I didn't have him look at it again, because he'd looked at it once.
You didn't make many changes.
No.
I'm comfortable with it.
I am too. If you're comfortable, David, you would want a couple changes, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Has anybody from the police department looked it over?
Chief had looked it over. He had a couple of questions, but he didn't tell me what the questions were.
That's helpful. All right, so Gary thought all the safety stuff that would preclude any liability issues was in here? He didn't have any comments?
I have no idea, because he talked to Dave. He did not talk to himself.
Okay. And then, did you, did you talk to John and Mike? They didn't want to, they were-
I talked to John. I saw John the Saturday after our meeting, and I told him about the changes that-
Yeah, okay.
He said that Dave had got ahold of it, and I told him about the changes.
I assumed they would show up, seeing it on the agenda, but-
I told him, I told him that we were meeting tonight. I didn't reach out to Mike, but I did reach out. I saw John. And he said he was okay with the changes, and I mentioned the 90-degree angle, because he was asking about Class 1. And I said, "Right now, our ATV ordinance says you can only cross it at a 90-degree angle." He says, "Can you stick that somewhere in there?" Then I said, "Sure."
Okay.
But he seemed fine with it.
I'm going to trouble him a little.
Fair measure, yeah. Angle, angle.
Motion to adopt the all-terrain vehicle use on town highways ordinance presented.
I'll second that.
Would we like to add pursuant to our town attorney, giving it a little glance over?
I think Gary looked at it.
I thought he did.
Yeah, but did, what did we remove that he wouldn't have? Didn't we remove helmets?
I think we removed helmets.
Yeah.
I just think we should have him look at it.
I think Gary's seen it since then.
Well, we removed, closing it, well, we were closing it from October to whenever we took that out.
October to May.
And, well, helmets, but that's just in ATVs that are like cars.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not on a four-wheeler. It's on UTVs.
I would just want him to look over, make sure it fits all the state statutes. He doesn't look us up to anything.
This is no harm, having him look at it.
Yeah.
Going to amend the motion?
We, we have a motion, but I was just wanting to- Yes.
So there's state statutes concerning helmets on four-wheelers and UTVs. Requires them to be worn in UTVs and on four-wheelers.
On private land? On private land, or on the road?
On, on, on a trail, on a vassal trail or public highway.
That's the point I was trying to make.
That's why I think we should just have Gary look at it, to make sure we have everything in here that legally we need to have in it.
I rescind, even though I don't agree, I rescind.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary, but-
I'd say it won't hurt.
No, it sure wouldn't. It could hurt to not have him look at it, though, so it would just be safe. So I guess we have no motion on the-
It's going to rescind it.
I mean, I would make the motion that we adopt it pursuant to Gary's looking it over and having no issue with it.
I think he needs to research the helmet things.
We could table till next meeting if that's, and just have to look at it. Then we'll just table till next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Pittsburgh Village Farm anti-displacement plan. I saw that we, that looked like, so what, the email that we got back from Terry was adequate for what?
Yep. Gary just wanted something in writing from somebody there saying that there was nobody being displaced.
Yep. Okay.
So motion to approve the presidential anti-displacement and relocation plan.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion or questions on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, new business. Baird, Town Hill Road concern.
Yeah, I think most of you are probably aware that Town Hill Road is not unlike syndicate road, except it's not a through road anymore. So what's been happening is there's an awful lot of garbage being dumped off at the end of the road. Back in November, we had 12 deer carcasses deposited down there, plus a coyote. I think about a month ago, less than a month ago, we had a car driven down there and set on fire. So I guess what I would like to see happen is from the turnout, which is west of the last house, have a, have a gate across there. I mean, you've got to, have to get access for the farmers. You've got two farmers, I think you've got Doug Hard, and you've got BJ Hathaway, does the cadwell place. But outside of that, there really is no need for vehicles being down there. People like to go down and fish in the Otter Creek, but they can go down there, can walk down there. I mean, that's part of the trail anyhow. So just a recommendation I would have and would welcome any persons or comments or-
Doesn't the railroad use that for maintenance?
Yeah, they have roofs down there.
They've got a crossing. Typically, when they go, I mean, it's a good question, Dan, I think, or to ask them, but typically, they, they either access on Proctor, or they're access up here from Depot Road. I've never seen them access, except when they were building the, the crossover three or four years ago, but I don't, that's not where they get on.
They don't go down that road to inspect that?
No, what they do, what they do, when they, when they're on the high wheelers, and there was the trucks that were on, that's, that's how they inspect. But I've never seen them down there. And, you know, someone's there, if we have, if that gate, if we put a gate up there and it were locked, I would suggest that Chad, the highway foreman, have a key, and the two farmers have keys, and if the railroad needed to, they could contact Chad to get access to it. But typically, that's not where they access it.
If two or three cars wanted to go down there and fish, is there any place to park?
Well, well, I would have, I would have, you know, a couple suggestions. One is where the, if you're going west on Town Hill Road-
Let's try it.
-just west of Jim Haley's house, the last house. I'm not talking about Davenport's cabin, I'm talking about the last house. The town's got a turnaround there for town highway trucks, and there's no reason why you couldn't park there. If, if people wanted to, you could go down to the bottom of the hill, and we've now widened that out, Pittsburgh really strong, people could park there, you know, if, if wanted to, but, you know, people do fish, there's no question.
Is there a parking area at the end of that? It's been a while since I've been down there.
Well-
There's enough room, isn't there?
Yeah, they sort of made a parking area, but the, the cadwells, the cattle's in there, but there's a, there's a gate going into their field, so anyhow. So people typically will park in front of the gate.
On, on the right.
Farmers love that, right?
Well, the W R P put in a fence-
Right.
And there is a place to park on the right, which was Bob's sand pit.
Right.
Is that where the car ended up?
No, it was further down. It was another, probably 200 yards further west. It was right, you know, where the pond is down there.
But that's too far down to, to work for these people that fish to park? Do you want to put the gate to the east of that?
Yeah, I, well, my first suggestion would be up at the top of the, not the top of the hill, but partway down the hill where the town turns around their vehicles. If, if for some reason you said, "No, it doesn't work," you could go down the bottom of the hill where the W R P fences, and you could pull in there, you know, a couple cars could pull in there. But I would think, rather than drive down the hill, get them to turn around before they get down the hill. That way you avoid, you know, I mean, last week someone got stuck down there, and their jackets and everything strewn all over the place.
Jackets?
Because Doug Hard, he put a tree down to keep people from going over into his property, so they thought, "Well, go around the tree." Well, they went off the road, almost went into Otter Creek. I mean, the nonsense that takes place down there is ridiculous.
Now, does that, anybody know if that's a Class 3 or a Class 4 road?
I don't know, I think it's on-
It used to be the road that went across the creek.
It used to be, yeah, a couple of years ago, a truck drove all the way down almost to Otter Creek.
Well, and that's part of the, that's part of the issue that I've heard from some of the neighbors is, I mean, Eddie Keith has talked about, trucks go down there, and "Oh, my God, what do you do now? We've got an 18-wheeler, and we didn't realize this wasn't a through road." Google said we could get to point B.
Listen to Google.
Wasn't there an issue last time we put a gate across the road?
Oh, yeah. You either got to close the road, you just can't gate a road. You can't do that. We got in trouble with that.
Yeah, you did.
Tried to do that once. You either have to give the road up, and that's quite bizarre.
So whose property were you thinking? Is it, is it on, is it the Village Farms property at that point, where you're talking about?
I'm not sure where you're talking about. If you turn to that-
Wondering where you're talking about, like, as far as you think the gate should be.
Well, my suggestion would be put the gate where the town trucks turn around.
Right.
And when they go down, they'll plow down to Jim Haley's house. They'll turn around and go back up.
Okay.
That way you avoid the steep hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, if you go down the steep hill, then where Dan's talking about, at the very bottom of the steep hill-
There's a turn, there's a bridge on the way.
The W R P fence line is, you know, you could put a couple cars in there and turn around. The road serves no function today. You know, if, if there was some reason that we thought we could put another bridge across Otter Creek, and I know David talked about, which I thought was a great idea, getting the bridge from the state and putting a small bridge across there, you know, as part of a walking trail.
Yeah.
You know, I guess that idea's probably going with Dave, but-
Not necessarily.
No, you never know.
No, because we have-
Because that's still part of the tri-town, tri-town trails.
The tri-town trails.
Once you give up a road, you never get back.
I'm just saying, it's gotten a resurgence because of this tri-town, tri-town trails, so, yeah.
We have a meeting next Tuesday.
Oh, oh.
Well, I think, first thing, we need to figure out what the designation of the road-
Yeah, we need to know if it's a 3 or 4.
And does it go across the tracks? The town road used to go across the tracks.
It would still go right up to the creek, I believe.
Right to the creek?
Yeah.
I know it does, but does it throw it up after the railroad?
The road's never been thrown up, that I know of. No, it's still town.
All right, yeah, so we'll have to-
Still town road.
Look into it.
Yeah.
But it, it is a nuisance. I mean, we end up with a lot of nefarious activity down there.
All right.
And there's really no need to have people go down there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District updates. Steven?
Hi. Let me introduce Jeff Whiting, who is our-
Hello.
-the vice chair. And one, you may have heard, or if you saw it in yesterday's paper, you know that Salisbury changed their minds and decided to send some $17,000 to the district. We aren't here to bend your ear too much, but we didn't talk about Pittsburgh's assessment at the last, the last time I was here. And that's why the board thinks it's a good idea for the leader, you know, the leadership to, to-
I'm here tonight. Jeff Schuman has a meeting in Salisbury. He's on the DRB there, so-
Okay.
I'm the vice chair. Basically, what we did with the budget this year was we kept it flat, the overall budget. There's minor adjustments between the towns because of changes in the educational assessment, which we use as a indicator of town ability to pay in, in our formula. And so with that, we make that change annually, and there are minor adjustments of a few hundred dollars up and down between the different towns. So essentially, we did a flat budget this year by taking some of our surplus from last year, which was not a bad mosquito year. At least until the end of the year, when there was a lot of concern, particularly in the towns that had positive tests for triple E and West Nile virus, which got everybody concerned about single mosquitoes landing on. But overall, it was a pretty dry year and a not very busy year in terms of meeting the thresholds to do treatment, which the state now requires that we trap enough mosquitoes on a given route, and that's 40. And that's female, female mosquitoes, which are the only ones that bite, because they need the blood meal in a 24-hour period. And quite frankly, we didn't get that high very often throughout the district. So we did have some money that came back, so that's what we did to keep the budget flat, but with the concerns that we were hearing and want, wanting more treatment. And I come from Goshen, and I can tell you, we're going to send a lot of water down the hill this year when the snow melts.
Yep.
And that normally translates to a not very good mosquito spring.
Yeah.
So just a little bit of the background on our budget thinking.
All right.
We did add some additional staffing, because a couple of our long-time employees took full-time jobs last year, and particularly since we weren't using them as often as they might, they went out and found them. And so we had, when we did need them, we were short.
Okay, yeah.
So we have added to the head count, but generally, that will follow mosquito activity in terms of the actual expenditures.
Okay.
I mentioned this to Dave, but he's not here anymore, and I think I mentioned it to Ann, but one of the issues with the mosquito activity is it's part-time and it's, it's contingent on there being the mosquitoes, okay? And so we're always, not always, we've started, we've realized we need to beef up the staff. You know, we can, we can hire some people not at the applicator level to go out and do the sampling and count the mosquitoes if they have the training.
Right.
We're always looking for applicators, which might be the kind of part-time job that people you run into would be interested in, if they're willing to take the licensing. And I noticed the, also in the Rutland Herald, about two weeks ago, there was a story about how the UVM Extension Program is basically conducting pesticide applicator training. And this is not, I presume, only for the mosquito board, but it's also for people like Brad Laws Agriculture Business, where they're going to be going out and spraying pesticides or GM Power and-
And also the people that are treating the big bedbug infestations in Burlington. Any, anyone that handles pesticides needs a pesticide applicator's license, and then you take a second test for the specialty that you're working in. So our people take a biting insect subpart. They take the general pesticide license, and then they take a second specialization, and you can get multiple specializations. We would like to get, we had for quite a while, I think it was Sean from Pittsburgh that was spraying in Pittsburgh, and when he got a promotion, new job here, he stopped spraying for us. But it's really helpful to have someone among our applicators that knows the, the local town area and what the, and is tapped into the local, where are the mosquitoes and where are they bad?
Yeah, sure.
So certainly, if you know of someone, it's a good paying job, it's a part-time job, no benefits, but we do pay well, roughly $30 an hour, once they get their license, and it's three to four hours in the evening.
Okay.
State runs those tests on a fairly regular basis, but at different locations?
Uh, yeah. The state actually will come, send someone down to give a training course, and then give the test immediately after the course. There's a manual about this that someone should read.
The court manual.
Right.
I'm an applicator, so.
Great. Let me get your name.
No, but it's, it's, you read the court manual, you can get the details.
Yeah. And you then have to get the second part of it on the mosquito.
Does the district have their own equipment? They would use your equipment?
No, we, we provide all the equipment and the, and the materials. Basically, the person shows up-
With license.
With license, prior to 8:00 at night, since we're not allowed to start spraying until the pollinators are at rest for the day. So we start at dusk and work until 11:00 or 12:00 at night, depending on how many miles of road we need to cover. And you need license, good driver's license, and you're good to go after some training of the specific roads to, to cover.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, thanks.
Maybe you think that's something we'd put on our town website?
Good, that's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
The box is not bad.
I know. I'll do, I'll do the Facebook page.
Do you give a description of the position to Ann at some point? We'll put it on our website?
Steve?
I can, I can-
Yeah, that would be great.
I'll get it from the Ad-Hoc Committee of Passageways.
Awesome, thank you.
Steve?
Will?
No, get it. He's got the most- I've got so many graphs, I hate the past one, too.
All right, Highway Certification of Compliance for Town Road and Bridge Standards Approval. All right, highway certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards approval. This is our yearly, yearly thing.
It's your yearly thing. Once you approve this, the two grants that you saw with it in your packet, I can submit. I can't submit it until we, submit them until we do this. And then after town meeting, we'll have the budget approval sheet that you guys will have to sign to finish the whole process.
Okay, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Town meeting prep.
So we used to have Joe Gonya do highway every year.
I know, he wants to do highway this year.
Joe's not here, so I didn't know who wanted to do general, who wanted to do highway. So I just figured I better put it on the agenda that we need to figure out who's doing what.
I'll stick with the general. I'm not doing, I don't know, yeah. He wants to do highway.
Want to do it, Mr. Vice Chair?
I want to sit through it once before.
Oh, yeah. You learned the last time not to say yes.
I did.
I can tell you what to say. I mean.
That's fine, I can do it. Yeah, I'll do that.
You're really, I mean, we always have, just have something written, you're just reading off here.
Oh, no, I'm, you'll do pretty well aware of what I, yeah. I just didn't want to say yes until I knew everybody else didn't want to.
Who'd have planned some questions in the audience?
Yeah, well, there may be.
Some hard, hard ball questions.
I can always make up answers.
I might have the answers for you, so you don't have to make something up.
We can refer to Ann. Yeah, we can support you on that.
And then, well, I guess, so what, we also are going to meet ahead of time. Everybody knows we meet.
A half hour.
Half hour early. Do we, are we good with the gym?
We are good with the gym. I got that taken care of before. I'll have the guys move in the PA system and help me set it up because I know nothing about it.
Me neither.
Is that a 6:30 start to the meeting?
Yes, it's a 6 o'clock meeting.
6 o'clock.
So, yeah, we'll move downstairs in the cafeteria.
Um, no, 6.
No, it's 6.
6:30 start to the meeting.
So 6 o'clock, we'll be downstairs, the cafeteria, just us, and then we'll hop upstairs.
Yeah, we should have everything set, just like we did last year.
Okay.
Chairs out, we'll put out.
All right.
We'll be up on the stage again.
Okay.
So I'll make sure everything's there.
Okay. We have, we reach out to one of the officers, I know usually Dave Sully is there. Do we, we always just have an officer there, right? Or has it only been on certain years where we've got this?
Sully had popped in and out last year, he didn't stay.
They basically just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sound control, he usually stops in.
He's popped in and out before.
Okay. Then I guess, yeah, I can't.
Probably because he'll be at the.
I know, that's why I was thinking.
If he gets real rowdy there, we can call him to come in.
True.
I'll mention it to the police officers to make sure someone's on duty.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
It's been heated when Tom was there, but not Ann Lynn Brown.
Oh, that's why there was specific, there was a specific reason that we had an officer the whole time there one time, okay. But, yeah, I think probably should just, you know, a reminder that it's town meeting.
And that was when Bridge 108 was a hot topic.
Yep.
So I think that's it for getting, getting prepared.
I just wanted to make sure we had our.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get them in a row before.
I know, because it's coming up pretty quick.
It is, you know, it's like two weeks away.
Yeah, so. Right, oh my God, it's our next meeting, isn't it?
It's the day, it's two days before our next meeting.
Day before.
If we take that one down, I think the correct one's there.
That calendar's not helping us at all.
If that one's, I have one in my office to go up there. It does not have been done yet.
That's an old one, I think.
Yeah, it's an old one.
Okay, I've got the new one in my office.
No, this is all 24.
Okay, I have the new one in my office, I'll hang it up tomorrow.
That's all right. All right, um, let's see, any questions on the orders?
Just so you guys know, Pat pulled one of the invoices, the Ferguson Water Works one, because she had questions for Sean on it.
Oh.
So she's going to hold payment on that until she gets answers from Sean and then Chelsea.
All right, good.
She thinks she has it coded to the wrong water sewer.
Okay.
I don't know which way it went, but.
All the parts are from the accident, repair?
Yes.
On the plow?
Yes.
Was that the other driver's fault?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
What I'm sawed right after the meeting.
Yeah.
It was all him.
All right, no other questions?
I didn't see anything.
All right, we'll sign those if you want to.
Do you want to do those or do you want to look our control and then sign everything?
Doesn't matter to me, the order.
Either way, you have to recess.
I know, I know. Yeah, let's just sign them and then just go into liquor.
Go into liquor board. I'm sure we can pull the button now.
What?
Stop the heat.
Pull the stuff off over there. We're going to have to separate them.
A whole liquor.
We are. That's all.
Yep, hold those.
Next time when he comes in and I'm sitting in his chair, he's going to get upset.
He'll sit on your lap.
He probably would.
Alicia, have you confirmed with Rob Spenceley about being moderator that he's going to be there?
Yes, I'll confirm again. Why, were you, was there a reason that you thought he wouldn't?
No, I just haven't heard.
I mean, he knows he's town.
I haven't heard anything, so it's making me nervous.
It's never good if Rob doesn't show up.
Let me just text him right now so I don't have to, like, forget about it later.
I'm sorry, I'm paranoid.
No, that's fine, it's good to be, I mean, that's part of our, it's coming up.
That's probably a good thing to know. He's probably bad.
And everybody should be receiving their town reports in the mail tomorrow.
Are we getting the fancy spiral bound ones?
I have one for you.
Yes.
Just her?
I have one left.
You have all Alicia only.
I have two left, you guys.
It's because I'm the only one that makes this, think about it. I like the spiral bound one.
Would be nice.
It'd make it easy, that's for sure.
We, I know, we used to get, didn't we get, used to get one for the whole board?
We got six of, we got six of them, but I had to give two of them to the town clerk's office.
Oh, okay.
Why two?
Why?
One for Pat, one for Helen.
I thought we were giving this to Gary before we signed it.
Yeah, we are.
Went through this whole instance, right?
Yeah, we did.
It's okay, I'll shred it like I did the other book, you guys signed it last time too, and I shredded it.
See, that's what happens when you sign stuff without reading, I know.
Yeah, I'm starting to look at this.
I promise there's no excavators in there.
I wouldn't expect that.
I don't know, man. I don't know.
Is there at least another one, the spiral bound ones for?
There's two.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, because it's, if you're going to, if he's going to read, read out of the book.
I can bring mine, but mine I have every year because I research it while I'm doing the old one.
I like things for me too, sometimes.
I will bring the two spiral bound with me to the town meeting.
Occasionally.
Okay, cool. All right, hold on, I'm gonna, well, I'm going to recess and we're going to go into liquor board while I very quickly text Rob Spenceley before I forget. So he, so he doesn't, well, he should be there by 6:00 too, right?
Yes, because otherwise I'm going to get nervous, Nellie.
Yep, nope.
Are you abstained?
Yeah, I'm a son.
And that is, is this March 3rd or 4th? March 3rd.
March 4th is voting here, 7 to 7. March 3rd is the meeting.
Right, I just didn't know which was the Monday, I haven't looked at it, March calendar yet.
3rd.
Monday's the 3rd. Go back to school show.
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding.
Oh, is this your vacation week?
Next week.
Oh, you going to Disney World?
Going May.
Where it's warm?
Yeah, May where it's warm, yeah. Now I know why you didn't sit here, to get up and take.
Well, yeah.
Okay, that's done. All right, so we are now in liquor.
Came here and they said, sit here.
Liquor board. And if everyone's had a chance to look them over, including the one we just got tonight, we can adopt them, unless anyone has any issues or questions about any, we can adopt them en masse.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
I make a motion, we approve them all.
I'll second that.
All right, any other, any questions about them?
Yeah, there's, there's no violations or anything.
Nope.
Not that I'm aware of.
That's my only question.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was quick.
Here, you guys can sign all of them. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to, like, throw them in your face.
No, that's fine.
So, um, I guess we'll sign that before recess, liquor board.
Where the hell do we sign here?
It doesn't matter, just sign anywhere.
Anywhere on the board.
There's, there's no good place on any of those pieces of paper to sign.
That's why I figured.
Interesting. Oh, look, we're going, all right. We're going sideways.
Yeah, because somebody denied them, remember?
Tom decided we're going to do it a diagonal. We're making it interesting.
Remember that year, Mr. Hooker?
What?
Nothing.
Oh, try that. I guess it's similar on this one.
Yeah, there's no, there's, there's no good place to sign. That's why I asked if you guys still signed them, because I was like, they're stolen.
Weren't these, weren't those the ones with the little tiny lines and we always signed on the left when we just signed on the right?
Yeah, it was a whole different, it was a whole different one.
Yeah, well, no, those are.
Follow the leader.
Right, those are like the right-of-way permit ones, aren't they? They have the approve and not.
It was liquor board.
Was it?
It was, I think it was liquor.
I lost my tab.
I lost my tab.
Some of those are getting kind of, yeah, I think I've been using them since I started here three years ago.
I know we should just go around in a circle, circle of spiral signatures. All right, those are all signed, so we will come out of liquor, come back into our select board meeting. And if I could please have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with 1 VSA 313A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the municipality or person involved at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring, appointment decision, and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting. 1 VSA 313A 3.
Does that include Ann or is it just the board?
To include Ann.
Make a motion.
It's okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.